By providing opportunity, achievement, and community for all. So on that note, we'll call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, February 10th. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And just so everyone's aware, Board Member John Doomer is joining us virtually. John has a work obligation out of town and he's going to join us via our technological hookup here, so. Mr. Donovan, are you aware of any changes we need for our agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
I move the agenda meeting approved as presented.
Second.
Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve our agenda. Does anyone have questions on it? And all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The minutes from our previous board meeting are attached in board docs.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on January 27, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Jennifer's motion is seconded by Tracy to approve our previous meeting minutes. Does anyone have questions on those? See none? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. E is vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve general technical vouchers, totally $767. Excuse me, $767, $341 and nine cents presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Annette, and I believe you left out $1,000, but I'll take that at face value. The amount is...
$767, $341 and nine cents.
Thank you. For posterity. Motion then seconded. Does anyone have questions on the vouchers? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That also clearly passes. We have public comment is letter F, and as I had the sheet brought up to the front here, we have a couple of folks signed up to visit with us on an agenda item. And in order of sign up, I'll presume at least, we will invite Sarah Rieckel to the podium.
All right, good evening. So I am here for a couple of reasons. I wanted to speak on a continuation of the Chromebooks, MacBooks discussion. Myself and a couple colleagues were fortunate enough to be invited to a committee meeting last week, and I wanted to kind of share two things in continuation of that. My first was a thank you. I left that meeting so impressed, not at all surprised, but I think folks at BOLD need to know how you folks operate. You did your homework, and this is coming from a teacher. You did your homework, you asked really good questions, you challenged each other, you were ready to have that conversation and consider all the ins and outs and this piece of it and that perspective, the fact that myself and a couple others were at the table, you were looking for insights, and I don't know if that's the norm on school boards. So we are very, very lucky, and I, my sincere thank you for the way you've conducted business there. I have great faith in your decision making if I knew nothing else just from that meeting. So thank you very much. My second thing, there were some really good questions that you all brought up that evening that had my wheels turning that night and then into the next week. And so I wanted to come here and share some homework I did. I took some ideas and some questions that you mentioned that night, and I thought, oh, that's a good question. I don't know that either. I'm going to go check in with some colleagues, just anecdotally, I didn't do a survey or anything, and see if I could bring back some answers, some insights, as you continue to make your decisions. So one thing that got brought up was the training. I thought that was something I hadn't thought of. What will that look like for staff? And specifically, what will that look like for upperclassmen? We've been focusing so much on freshmen because they're the ones with the Chromebooks that we may potentially go with, but what about our sophomores and our juniors who are going to have a big change after quite a few years with the MacBooks? And I thought, it's a good question. I'm going to see what people think about that. So I was speaking with some colleagues, just a smattering across the board, and they did not have concerns there. They said that the freshmen caught on quickly, staff caught on quickly. If there were small questions, small functions, those were easily addressed, and they have every confidence that seniors, or excuse me, seniors will be gone, sophomores and juniors will be able to make that adjustment should we go to Chromebooks. But that was something that got brought up that I thought, oh yeah, what about the sophomores and the juniors, because we've really been looking at the freshmen. So I wanted to bring that to sense and just what I learned from colleagues on that note. The other thing I thought was so important that really had me up that night and thinking the whole next week is, what about our innovation piece? What about our creativity that has been such a pillar of Milton High School? And that's, like I said, that kept me up, and I thought, okay, are we going to be losing something there? Are our kids still going to have that opportunity? And I think the answer is yes. If we were to go to Chromebooks, we have Mr. Quan's digital media classes, we have Mr. Schindler doing some amazing things. And then I started thinking, okay, what about those kiddos that really like to explore on these machines? What about them? We have flex periods, we perhaps could do clubs. I think we can keep that super important innovation creativity piece for our students should we go to Chromebooks. And then my last question that I've been pondering for the week is, what do we need? And when I asked my colleagues, the resounding answer was focus. It's a reality of our students today that that machine makes it tough to focus, and perhaps Chromebooks could help with that, and the folks I talked to spoke to that. So, thank you. I think my time's up, but thank you for all you do. We trust your decision. We appreciate the work that you're going to continue to put into making a decision. We think Chromebooks could help with the focus without losing our innovation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rieckel. Also, Brian Miles, I would welcome to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to echo Sarah in sincerely thanking all of you for your commitment to doing what's best for our students and our community. I really appreciate the thoughtful research and the questions everyone has brought to this discussion. It's clear that everybody involved is really passionate about ensuring we're making the best possible choices for our students, and that kind of dedication is something I don't think every district is as fortunate to have. For anyone who may not know me, I serve as our district technology integrator, supporting our schools in effectively using technology for teaching and learning. And my connection to our district runs deep. I started as a kindergarten consolidator at Cardinal and now stand in front of you in my 13th year as a faculty member. In my current role, I support our teachers in using technology effectively and making sure they have the right tools to help their students in this rapidly evolving world. That includes researching new technology, training their staff, and working alongside teachers and students every day. When Chromebooks were first proposed, I was very skeptical, like possibly the biggest opponent in the building. I am a lifelong Apple fan, and I've converted basically my entire family to iPhones, with my dad as the last one, though. But I did my best to approach this pilot with an open mind, and I've been genuinely surprised by how well these devices serve our student learning needs. One of the greatest challenges educators and parents face right now is helping students manage their digital lives, learn to focus, balance, and use technology responsibly. While Apple offers many fantastic tools, Chromebook system combined with classwise gives teachers better resources to help students focus on learning and develop those self-management tools. Beyond my own observations, I also saw outside perspectives. Conversations with faculty from UW-Whitewater and Loy College suggest that Chromebooks align more closely with the systems students will use in higher education. Business professors at UW-Whitewater even emphasize that the Mac's operating system is so different from what is used in the business world that a transition to Chromebooks would better prepare students for their future careers. While I always love Apple, my role is to support what's best for our students. Based on what I'm seeing daily in our classrooms and what I'm hearing from teachers, students, and professionals behind our walls, I believe that Chromebooks are the right choice for our learners today and for the future that awaits them. Thank you for your time and your continued dedication to our students.
All right, thank you. All right, so those were the only two folks that signed up for public comments, so thank you for that, and we will move past into superintendent update. A for Rich is red hot highlights.
There's great things happening across all of our schools. I want to share some highlights on some of those things that either happened or are coming up. This coming week, Milton High School, Middle School, and Northside are celebrating winter spirit weeks. At the high school, there's fundraisers that will be ongoing for the Unity Team and the upcoming Polar Pledge. And also National FFA Week is coming up, the week of February 17th, at the high school. At the middle school, on top of Unity Team fundraising, they're also celebrating iHeartAve Week. They have fun Wicker themed events and Dress Up Days planned, and also a hygiene product supply drive for the school. They're collecting boxes of Queen X's, sanitizing wipes, and hand sanitizer are greatly appreciated. At Northside, they're repeating something that they started last year. It's Do Good Wisconsin Cereal Box, Cereal Box Domino Challenge, I guess is the official name, but they're collecting, at Northside, their students and staff are collecting unopened cereal boxes, and we also have a collection area here at District Office. And then they, at the end of the collection, they line them up in the Domino chain that circles throughout the hallways and literally nearly every hallway at Northside. They're hoping to collect more cereal boxes than they did last year because all of the cereal boxes that are collected are donated to the Milton Food Pantry. Last year, over 1,500 boxes of cereal were collected and donated in the Milton Food Pantry, shared that they did not have to either give donations or go out and buy cereal for the rest of the year. So when I was at Northside today, I saw that the boxes of cereal coming in, so we encourage community members, staff, families to support that progress. We also have coming up the 10th Annual Betty Purdue Memorial Badminton Tournament. It's going to be on Wednesday of this week. Stay tuned to district social media for posts, for photos and videos of that fun event. And the whole month of February is Heart Health Month. Our district nurses, our health aides, and our MERT teams, which are medical emergency responder teams at each of our schools, have gone above and beyond to earn Project Adam designation for our schools. Project Adam is an organization that certifies that schools are ready for cardiac emergencies through TRAM response, AED access, proactive heart health education. Last Friday was National Wear Red Day, where students and staff wore red to show their support of cardiovascular health and to celebrate our district's outstanding health team for all that they do. So thank you for everyone that took part in that. And then we have some activities and athletics that have shown some great success. The robotics team at Milton High School had a very successful showing in the Wisconsin tournament in Kenosha last month. Members of the team advanced to, advanced in the tournament, and now will be competing in the state championship for robotics. That's a team that I believe was new last year, is that right, Ms. Naylor? So that just started last year, and we've already put together a team that is advancing to the state championships. Lastly, three teams of Milton students showcased their financial knowledge at the 2025 Financial and Investment Challenge Bowl. All three teams from Milton High School had strong showings. One team finished second overall, and that team earned a spot in the state competition that's coming up, I believe in May. Another team placed third in the competition, and the third team had a very strong showing but didn't finish in the top three. Our gymnastics team will be competing in their final home meet of the season tomorrow. We invite our community to attend, and we're pink in honor of our two seniors on our gymnastics team. And the Badger Conference had their first ever girls' wrestling championship that was held this weekend, and the Milton Red Hawks girls' wrestling team finished first place in the Badger Conference Wrestling Tournament. So congratulations to them. They have some regional section and hopefully state tournament events coming up if they advance. And we have five girl wrestlers, four of the five were conference champions, and the fifth was second place in the conference. So an outstanding showing for the girls' wrestling, and it's great that our conference has added that as a competition for our girl wrestlers. And so in all of those events and in all of our activities and athletics, I want to congratulate the students, the advisors, and the coaches for all of our teams and groups for all of their hard work and outstanding effort that they put in.
Excellent, thank you, Rich. Questions at all for Rich? Okay, B on the superintendent update is actually going to be me, and I'm going to let you folks in on another Red Hawk highlight in that we are all Red Hawks. And WASBE is the acronym, of course, for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, which we are all members of. Our district is, of course, and our board. And WASBE has a process whereby periodically, as each of us as individual members engage and involve ourselves more and take advantage of more opportunities to both learn more about our jobs and more about the function of school boards, et cetera, they recognize those at different points in all of our experiences or whatever. And when we reach certain thresholds, WASBE reaches out of recognition to acclimate that, et cetera. So it is my pleasure to read to you a certificate of achievement from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, who awards Level Two to Jennifer Johns for demonstrating a high level of commitment to Wisconsin public school students by participating in WASBE Professional Development Opportunities. This is dated way back in October, but we are certainly glad that this came, and it comes with a place to frame the certificate and in for Jennifer. So help me congratulate Jennifer. Excellent, thank you. Okay, now we will roll down to our committee reports. We have several. First on the agenda is Finance Committee. You all know, of course, our treasurer, John Doomer, chairs that committee. John is remote tonight and has asked me if I would, in lieu of simplicity here and whatnot, sort of introduce the topic. We're going to have some administrative help to walk us through that. But Finance Committee met last week, and we had three topics on the agenda. State budget update, and then OPEB, which is our post-employment benefits piece of the budget, and investment update there, and a quarterly financial report. So I'm going to invite Ross McPherson, our business director, to walk us through what we talked about in some detail at our Finance Committee.
Thanks, Joe. At our last committee meeting, which was shortly after the last board meeting, we were in the middle of deep break from the state head convention, and in the agenda for tonight, I included some of the slides from, many of the presenters at the WASBE, these are particularly from the WASBO group, the Wisconsin Association of School Business Officials. And in here, a lot of the highlights were what the state priorities may be over the next two years as we put together the 25-27 budget. You heard someone briefly talk to some of this last time, but there's some question around what will the per pupil amount be? What is the current trajectory of Act 10, which was enacted back in 2011? And what's going to happen to school districts there? It also puts some highlights and shines some light from the Department of Revenue on what actual Wisconsin tax burdens look like, if the lowest it's been since the 1970s. So I'm not going to rehash every single slide on this deck here. I did want to highlight that there is still quite a bit of uncertainty going into the state budget, which I feel is something that someone in my position says every two years, but we're hopeful that this spring we get some better clarity as we go further into the budget preparation process. The other two topics we talked about that night were for an OPEB investment update. The district recently completed its required actuarial study on what our future total liability is for our entires and the benefit structure. And in doing so, I took it upon myself to review our current deposits for OPEB and what, how long we might be looking for becoming fully solvent in our OPEB funds. We have three different areas of deposit right now. We have some funds with the Bank of Milton, some with the local government investment pool, which every state district in Wisconsin uses, and some with Midwest Trust, which was an OPEB investment partner that this district acted on in 2023. I've been in discussions with the Bank of Milton on the deposits we have there. And in our next Finance Committee, I'm going to bring back an update to that committee, which we may take some further action on at the next board meeting on the 24th. For the quarterly financial reports, very similar. I previewed a format that was put forward by my colleagues at WASBO for some state standards on financial reporting. I got some feedback from many of the communicators that night, which I'm going to be putting into reports to review again next session, which we will bring back to the board as a update for quarterly reports.
Excellent. John, do you have anything to add? I don't, Joe, thank you. Ross, good job, thanks. Do the board members have any questions? Very good, thank you, Ross. Okay, and that covered Finance Committee, so we will move on. Next up is Policy from Rick.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Policy Committee met on Wednesday, January 29th. The list of policies up for possible approval at the next meeting is listed in board docs, but I do have a few highlights. Policy 2340, district sponsored trips has new language which requires any international field trips must be affiliated with an organization that specializes in international travel. There's also new language that specifies that trips will not be taken to countries that currently have travel warnings issued by the State Department. Policy 5330, administration of medication, emergency care has new language that states when students can be given non-prescription medication, whether it be from the school stock or from a supply provided by the parent. There's also an update which states that responsible students in grades 7 through 12 may possess and self-administer medication with parental permission. There also is an updated section regarding the administration of stock bronchodilators such as Albuterol. Policy 5505, academic honesty has new language regarding AI technologies and how it may impact academic integrity. The new policy states that AI may be used with a teacher's permission as long as it is used in an ethical manner for things such as research assistance and data analysis, among others. The policy states that academic dishonesty would include something such as presenting the results that are the product of an AI platform as one's own, where the use of AI was not specifically allowed by the teacher. Policy 5350, suicide prevention intervention and postvention has new language about what suicide prevention instruction is included in the health education classes. There also is language regarding staff development that is done to educate about possible risk factors, warning signs, and the response in the event of a suicide event. Policy 8500, food services has some new language that spells out the process for a parent to request dietary modifications for their child, including what needs to be done and which information needs to be provided to the nutrition team director. And I did want to tell everyone, we are, the draft policies are being handled a little differently. They're not in board docs anymore, and I was going to share those with everyone, and I forgot to do that. Chelsea, can you please share those? I'll whip the whole board, please.
They have been updated in the draft portion of board docs. Chelsea took the ones from the spreadsheet and put them into the draft portion of board docs.
Okay.
The corresponding policies. One thing that, when you look at the updates, you will see some in that list that aren't coming to the board, either for first read or at the next board meeting for second read, because Merle at times will add additional policies after we've looked at which ones we want to bring. But the draft language that's found in both in board docs and in that spreadsheet should match each other.
Okay, thanks. Any questions about any of those?
Rick, just specific, excuse me, to the AI one. Will that come up again as technology advances? Because I predicted, I don't know, that we're going to start seeing AI infused in some of the tools that we already use.
I would assume it would, because we just, I think it was last policy meeting or the one before, when we also had some changes to the academic integrity policies. I would anticipate changes.
I would anticipate right now it's a lot of take it, put AI, take it out of AI. Pretty quick, it's going to be just horrible with you, good or bad.
No, good one.
So I did a bunch of questions that Rich was able to assist, but there is one other question I have, which, can I ask about the ones that are in draft? Or is that something we need to email on?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so can I just get an explanation on the class rank, the difference between the guaranteed admission program and the Academic Excellence Scholarship Program? I was trying to read the difference between the two. That's the other one I had a question about.
Yeah, Jeremy is probably the person we...
Can you give me your specific question, Joe?
So on the policy of the last two, it says, so class rank and Wisconsin Guaranteed Admission Program. I think I understand that one, that's the laudate program.
Correct.
But then the Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship Program is straight?
And that is zero change. So that is a program that's been around for 40 years, and that is off of straight grade point average. So that, it's specified in here probably because Niola had specified in their version, although we quickly added the language for the guaranteed program because we got the waiver from DPI. I carried the same language over from Niola's suggestion just to make sure that they understand the differentiation that for the Academic Excellence Scholarship, state statute states it has to be straight grade point average result, and there's not a waiver.
There's no waiver for that one? Okay, that was my question.
There's not a waiver, and that's a very, very established old program.
Thank you.
That's why we put both of them in there, so people can see that, use it. One here and this one here, that's the reason.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so these, this list of policies will come back at the next board meeting for possible approval and adoption. Next up, and in the discussion of possible action, Policy 2264, Policy 2266. And this is something that the committee did not discuss because this is due to some changes that have happened since that meeting. So Rich, I don't know, why don't you speak to that, please?
Yeah, Chelsea, can you put the memo in? You have to memo it.
All right, all right. There's a memo that kind of walks through this issue, but I'll highlight some things from it. Back in July of 2024, a board action was taken to add a new policy that addressed the Title IX requirements that were in place at the time. And the requirement was that that districts had to have that policy in place by August 1st, so we put that in place. We still kept the old policy because the requirements from the federal government was that at the time was that for incidents that happened prior to August 1st, you would use the 2020 Title IX regs, and then for things that, incidents that happened after August 1st, you would use the 2024 regs. At the Policy Committee meeting on the 29th, I shared with the committee that we were waiting for guidance from Niola on this policy and on another policy. And in between then and now, we did get that guidance from Niola, and their recommendation, and it's been vetted by legal counsel, is that with the 2024 Title IX regulations being revoked at the federal level, Niola's recommending that we return to what we had in place before that action on July of 2024. And to do that, it would mean rescinding Policy 2264, which was the new policy that was put in, and it would be editing Policy 2266, which was our old policy. And the only edit on it would be removing two lines that were added that refer to the policy that we would be rescinding. So the recommended motion is to approve rescinding Policy 2264, which was the new policy that was put in place in July, and updating Policy 2266. And I will ask Chelsea to put that Policy 2266 up on the screen. That's also included in the board docs because I want folks to see what that proposed change is. And I'm going to put it up here, too. You can see that the only proposed change is the elimination of those first two lines in 2266, because they refer to the new policy that was put in place that we're proposing to rescind. And then Policy 2260, excuse me, Policy 2264 is also in board docs, but it's the entire policy that is struck through because the proposal would be to rescind that. By taking the action on those two policies, we would match our policies to what the current requirements are from the federal government. And since the federal government has put this new requirement in place, we have been operating in that manner. Anytime there's a law change, whether it's federal, local, or state law, that contradicts anything that's in our policy, we obviously don't expect our staff to violate the law. So if there is a legal change, we follow the law, and then if it affects a policy, we bring that policy to the board. And I felt that rather than waiting until our next Policy Committee meeting, which might be late spring or early summer, we would bring that now for approval because it does put us, it matches our policy with the new federal requirements.
I move to approve rescinding policy. I move to affirm rescinding Policy 2264 and update Policy 2266 as presented.
Second.
Tracy's motion is seconded by Rick, as you just heard, to amend our policies in the manner that she outlined in her motion. Does anyone have questions?
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question. So I just want clarification that even though we are rescinding and taking out boards to protect our pregnant students or trans students, I am making assumption that we still offer them the same protections under these, this, under 2266. But I just wanted to clarify that we're following the federal launch and supporting, but we respect and I believe our admin are very wonderful with our kids, that we would continue to protect those students.
We I want to make sure that I'm answering that in the way that it was asked, and then if you have follow-up on your own. Our proposal is to rescind the entire policy, Policy 2266.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2265.
Excuse me, rescind 2264, which would put us back where we were back in July. Your question is, would we continue to protect the rights of pregnant students and staff as described in the updated policy? My answer would be that we think that that's really important for us. We wouldn't have it in policy, but our procedure would be to respect those rights of pregnant students and staff and operate in a similar manner to the policy that we're doing.
And trans students.
We have to be careful in both of those areas because we have to make sure that we're staying within the law.
I make the assumption that our administrators protect all students regardless.
That is absolutely true, but we have to I don't want to make promises that are differently understood. If the board would prefer to have the language from the 2024 regulations put into board policy to ensure that that is something that carries on, because I would say that those things are important to us, but to ensure that it's in policy and that the expectations are clear, the board could choose to keep those things in policy, keep those portions, any portions of that in policy, as long as they don't violate any of the federal guidelines, the federal requirements.
Why don't we stand doing what our legal team asks us to do? I just want to clarify that we are respecting and protecting all of these secrets hovering over there. I don't know if he wants to add something, but
Just waiting for you.
I just wanted to be sure we're really clear and that I understand that our administrators, those needs of unique needs of all our students.
Sorry for barking over there, but I wanted to share that in my conversations with legal counsel, they have shared that there are pregnancy protections in other federal laws, state laws, that are outside of Title IX. So as in the past, even before Title IX became a federal law in 2020, and with the updates, we still protect our staff, our students with any kind of pregnancy requirements. I can't list all those federal laws off the top of my head, but I've been assured by legal counsel that the district has been doing that.
Thank you.
And one other thing that I'll add, at times at the state level, the state legislature might enact statutes in any of these areas. I mean, obviously, we need to follow those statutes. An example of something that we've followed regarding trans students is for participation in any WIAA athletics, WIAA has had specific requirements for how schools should address that issue. And based on the new requirements coming from the federal government, they are updating those, the WIAA requirements. And as a WIAA school, we would follow what their requirements are.
And I think it's important to note, if you bring up 2266, the very first line states that the board does not discriminate on the basis of sex, including sexual orientation or gender identity in its education part. So it is in our policy.
Just want to clarify, I didn't mean that. Thank you.
Can I just give some clarity on the procedure here? This came in in between policy meetings, is that correct? Or did policy?
Yes, the, we, the new requirements from the federal government came in before the Policy Committee meeting, but we are waiting on recommendation from NEOLI and from legal counsel, which came in between the Policy Committee meeting and now.
And I'd be clear, I'm supportive. Given the sensitivity of, is there any impact if we wait and run it through policy and get a recommendation to kind of follow protocols, or does it need to be decided tonight?
I can answer that one.
Go ahead.
So legal counsel has shared with the school district in Milton that we need to pivot immediately once these policies have been updated. Anything that I, as the Title IX coordinator, am working on, we have to shift from the 2024 regs to the 2020 regs. So to be able to do that, we have to make sure that we're following the policy. Right now, we have two policies, like Rich had shared. The 2024 reg policy needs to be rescinded so that we can shift to the 2020 regs. And that policy.
Yeah, that's clear.
Like Rich stated, it might be months before we have.
Yeah, no, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, the motion on the floor is to rescind Policy 2264 and update Policy 2266 as presented. Other questions? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I call that clearly passed. Thank you, everyone, for that. And finishes Policy for.
Yes.
The moment?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you, Rick. Okay, and then we'll move down our agenda. More committee reports. The next one happens to be a joint committee. Our Curriculum and Technology Committees have been working synchronously on a single issue here, and this is chaired by Ed and Jennifer, and I believe Jennifer is going to kick this off.
Oh, no, I think we
Okay, maybe you all think the same thing.
Yeah, pass that over to Ed, or again, I'm happy to review.
Okay. I would invite anybody from the school district up to kind of go through this, to the memos and Board Docs. The background has been stated several times by everybody, but I'm happy to have someone reiterate it. I think there are some new on the board, on the document here, from student learning and device application. Jimmy, do you maybe want to speak to that, or do you want me?
Sure.
I want to make sure that I don't force it to somebody else to know.
I guess, just speaking to the memo, too, with regards to the recommendation that we have is to be moving the high schools their Chromebooks with regards to the student, the findings for our recommendation, that we do strongly, I believe that our teachers are going to be able to continue to meet learning objectives. You know, as we mentioned, over 9% of the staff said that they can meet the objectives of Chromebooks. And the alternatives are, we believe, we have sets for those that indicate that they needed something else. That's very similar to what we did with MacBooks. You know, based on the pilot, what the staff has shared and continues to share, and they have stated very well during all the comment, that the recommendation move for Chromebooks are going to meet our students' needs and our teachers' needs as they work with them. And it's also, I do believe that with the growth of web-based browsing tools, students are going to continue to be able to learn beyond just their own lessons. You know, the majority of our members also reported, have shared that they're able to access their learning, and that continues to get better as well. You know, the other item, too, that we have shared, as I've talked with staff and as I've talked with you know, as we, this has been a lot of consideration over several months now, too. And the reason that I'm confident in this recommendation, too, is that staff, as mentioned, too, they believe they can meet the learning needs of the students, but also it's the focus needs as well, too. In Chromebooks with ClassWise, it's something that I repeatedly heard, I've heard the messages has been given clearly to me, and it's articulated relatively nicely. That's why I have confidence in this recommendation that we're bringing forward.
Can we just clarify, 90% of the 54 teachers who are asked, not 90% of the whole staff?
Ninety, 54, we have 54 teaching staff, so this is not our counselors, and it's not student services. This is every classroom, special education teacher, so there's 54 of those at least.
So Jennifer, I certainly invite you to add commentary. You'd be like, I would just like to thank everybody involved. It was I asked early on in this procedure, and later, sorry for my voice, that goes did the board be engaged in this decision, because I really do believe that it's a big decision, and I feel confident that the board has given this, whatever they decide tonight, has given this a lot of good thought, and I felt confident in the fact that the administration has brought forth their reasoning. So I, work is hard, and having good dialogue is super important. So I just want to thank everyone for that. And for the board for being committed to this decision is very important. Jennifer, I miss you. There's going to be a lot of value there.
Well, I'm confident that we are all kind of up to speed on this subject because the majority of us were at the meeting. So again, I think that the memo spells out exactly what the teaching staff and administration really does want the board to understand. I feel like they have covered every area of concern that we've had, the questions that we were asking. It spells it out, just the background, the student learning, the application use and device, and then the financial piece of it, too. So I don't think anything else from my standpoint.
I have a question. So you, on that note, Jeremy, you stated that 50, so predominantly you asked all the teachers in the high school. How many of them would have had classes that did not have Chromebooks? A significant amount. They don't teach freshmen, correct?
Correct. Of the, and it's like 41 or 42 had freshmen. So the majority of those did have freshmen at some point, but I, this has been a conversation a lot with the high school, and so there's conversations at the PLC level about how it's working. But by the point that I asked this question, a lot of them, while they may not have done it from experience with regards to their classes that they've done through the pilot, they're reflecting on how they work with students. Also, very few of our teachers teach solely freshmen, so they're answering this question from the perspective of teaching all of their courses as well. It was 41 or 42 that had freshmen.
And again, I want to echo Ed and thanking the admin, I mean, and Neil, and all you guys, everything that you guys have done and all the work, the teachers that came to the meetings, the board members for all the detailed work that they did. This is such an important decision because this will impact our students for a long time. And I appreciate all of the reasonings why, and I do struggle with it. For 10 years, we've had these, and we have it between a 97 and 99% graduation rate. So our teachers are doing wonderful things with the tools that we have. I struggle with taking a step back, and I appreciate the comment about the business world. And I work in that world, and I would never use this, and I would never use a Chromebook either. So like, I appreciate that every technology, every business, every industry has something different technologically that they need. I just feel if we take a step backwards, it's going to be hard to take a step forwards again. And there are districts who have gone from one to the other and then gone back again. I feel like I have gotten feedback from students. I appreciate all the teacher feedback. That was amazing. I've gotten student feedback. I've gotten community member feedback. Parents that have students and freshmen and upperclassmen. And again, the feedback there is, it's something you talk to. So it's a very hard decision for this board to make. Because we all want to do the best for our students and for our teaching staff. And sometimes, to me, less is not more. Just my opinion.
Well, I don't think it's a hard decision. I don't think it's a step back. Teachers have told us that learning objectives can be met. The teachers who need the mats will still have them available. They will allow the students to focus. It will save the district money. It will save families' money, which I think is a point we can't overlook here. And I think we need to listen to the people who are in the classroom room with the students every day, our teachers. They say this is going to work, and they want it.
Joe?
Yeah, go ahead.
So when I ran for school board not that long ago, it hasn't even been here yet. One of the things I was asked is what is something we can really evolve? And my answer was our tech program. It's something that we should be really proud of. And I am really proud of it. I think we have something unique and special here. And I stand by that comment. I also have a deep concern that we're throwing our eggs into a private company called Google, and that everything will be filtered through whatever that corporation decides we get to see or not see. And that's, it's an issue. And then finally, I, not finally, there are many other reasons, but I believe learning happens always. I think we learn from everything we do, including the kids who break the system and try to get around it, including the kids who aren't doing what we think they're supposed to be doing in school. I think learning defined by us is one thing, and learning objectives, and then learning that our kids choose to do on their own is another. And I think it's really important that we allow those opportunities to happen. I have a deep respect for our teachers. I have a deep respect for our kids. And that idea of control and focus, I would, I would hope that we have some other options for how to help with that focus.
I'm going to make a motion to that district move forward using the Asus CR12 Chromebook as MHS student one on learning device starting with the 25, 26 school year.
Second.
Can we ask for a little poll on this one?
We're not there yet.
Again, lesson, you're
And we'll get to you in just a minute, John. I'm going to restate the motion, and then there's obviously a chance for more discussion, so no one will, no one will miss that opportunity. So Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer, and I will paraphrase, I think pick up where Rick read it out of the recommendation, is that we, as a district, use the Asus CR12 Chromebook as the MHS student one on learning device starting with the 25, 26 school year. Yeah, okay. So that's, the motion is moved and seconded. It's on the floor. It is still eligible for more discussion. I'm going to pivot to John. You want to weigh in?
Yeah, I just had a couple questions. I'll lead with a thought, though, or a statement. I, too, want to thank everybody that was involved. I know this has been a process for the admins for quite some time. You know, the board's been we've been notified of it, kind of brought abreast as time goes, and in the last six weeks or so, the amount of time that we've spent on this subject and, you know, in the meetings and outside. I know today, when I had a chance, I was, you know, making calls and doing more research. So, so thank you, guys, for that. I think, Jeremy, I'm not sure if Neil is there, maybe you may know the answer to this. You know, one of the things that the speakers talked about tonight was focus. So, you know, getting these kids to focus in class. I know, I think Neil maybe mentioned 170 kids, for an example, had downloaded Roblox, and that was, you know, a documented stat that he had. So my question, Jeremy, is what is done to those 170 kids? Are we calling them into the office? Are we, is there any kind of discipline action for those that are using this device the way they're not supposed to?
There is, it's a, there's a multi-layer to that response to that question. Certainly, students who are not on their, are not focused during class periods, we can certainly, teachers redirect them as well, too. We are not able to continue to oversee what every student is doing, but that's just not doable. But certainly, students who are not doing what they're supposed to be redirected and need be working with the office on that. I think what staff find, though, John, is that there's, if there's I don't like to use cat and mouse, but there's a lot of distractions that students have.
Sure.
Even in its distraction them in their class, in their classrooms, in their class periods, or from their work, that is just something that is very real. That's something that I hear very, very clearly from my staff.
Okay. So has there been any disciplinary actions for any kids using the device in a way they weren't supposed to, inside of class, or inside of school, outside of school?
Yes, there is. Without, no specific discipline, yes, there is.
Okay, thank you.
And Neil is here.
Okay. I thought some flash in the screen. Another question, when it comes to training, Jeremy, I know you had answered this, the enye sign, right? Like part of the, one of the parents I had talked to, the frustration was the enye sign in Spanish class. You know, that was just a few weeks ago. So my question is, and I know you can't train everybody and everything, but that's one thing that in a Spanish class should have been figured out early. So that was part of the ramp up and the training, but you know, just making sure we don't miss stuff like that, that seems like. But, you know, just making sure we don't miss stuff like that, that seems like.
We are, we are confident, part of what this pilot has done, done is helped us to learn what things that we need to be able to hit. And there are, there are, we miss something, we've got to catch it. But I am, I am confident that if, if passed, as we prepare for Chromebooks, that we'll have a successful ramp up to getting staff and students ready for next year. I am confident that we will be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. Another question, if I may, Joe. So one of the things, I believe it was mentioned that we're going to need four carts, which is about twenty-five MacBooks per cart, kind of on hand. Ross, I appreciate your email back today. But in, in document we have coming up later, it looks to be that we're going to need actually four hundred. So my understanding is we already have some and we're adding to it. Like what is the number going to be that we need to add or that we're going to have on hand loaners and part of the cart system?
Sure. So the people who have done our refreshes in the past have done this very strategically. And they've gotten us to the point where, one of the big reasons for the last refresh was we were able to add devices to our fleet to serve as a loaner due to breakage, due to missing, we have some of our system weren't missing. And so we've gotten us to the point where we know that this quantity of MacBooks and iPads will carry us through a four-year cycle. So there's two ways to look at it. One is to look at all of our staff, all of our paraprofessionals, all of our substitutes, all of our interns, all of our student teachers. And then couple that with all of our cart laptops. We have carts in the elementaries, we have carts in the north side, middle school, for the library, tech ed. And then we would be adding additional carts to support MacBook needs at the high school. We can kind of add up all those numbers, plus a little buffer for our, again, breakage and our missing to get us through for four years and more than eight hundred. The easier way to do it is to take the number of student MacBooks out of our current, minus the student count, minus the MacBook loaners, and then add back in the carts. They both get to about eight hundred.
Eight hundred is what we will buy, we'll have eight hundred MacBooks in our, in our fleet, I guess, or in our, in our.
Neil, can I just follow, is it, just what I'm trying to understand that? Eight hundred round numbers, four hundred for staff, four hundred for the high school?
No, I think in the memo, it's broken out by staff members and then carts and loaners. And then, thank you.
I'm just, I had a hard time understanding from the memo.
Sure. So the number is, the number of MacBooks that we would order is eight hundred. Four hundred of those would be for staff, three hundred and twenty would go directly into those K eight and then ninety-two carts. And then eighty would give us loaners and flex.
That's the part that was missing. Thank you for saying that.
So when you mentioned one hundred, which is for carts, that number's really four hundred? Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
For carts?
Well, for extra units that we don't need for staff.
I would say that's included in the eighty. We do issue loaners to staff because staff members do experience breakage incidents. We also have device, yeah, damage, missing. Sometimes we rotate out our, if we have something new in stock and we have one that's kind of great D C D condition, we can rotate those out and kind of use the best ones, get the best ones in front of our students. So it's really that, that eighty is built into that, that flex and that loaner to give us a buffer to get through four years of fleet use.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to pause and let somebody else speak for a minute here. Thank you.
Okay. Pause you just a second. Just to be fair, I'm the only one that has not weighed in. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Doesn't matter to me, I was just recapping our, our meeting.
Okay, go ahead, Jennifer, if you want to share where you're at.
Yeah, I am one hundred percent in favor of, again, making the switch. Just like Rick had mentioned, I trust the teaching staff and administration. And I certainly have valued all that has been done on this topic. There are so many things spelled out in this memo that, again, just in my opinion, really scream, we should make this change. And financially is a big piece of it. I think we're ignoring how much money this move will save our families. And I think that's a big piece of this. So an eight hundred and seventy-nine MacBook versus a two hundred and ninety-nine Chromebook is going to save the district a lot of money. But if we dive into it further, insurance for our families is much less expensive on the Chromebook. And certainly repairs to the Chromebook are much less expensive than the MacBook. So again, I feel like financially, this is a win-win for our families and the district. Another key point, and it's been mentioned already tonight, is that in higher education, Apple products are not used exclusively by any means. And so again, I feel like our students will actually be able to pivot once they get to higher education, whether that be a tech school or a four years. So again, that's a big piece of it for me. Focus in the classroom is, again, a lot of the topic that has been talked about by teachers. And I feel strongly that it is the district's responsibility to educate our students. Chromebooks will do that. And it will take away a lot of this distraction. So we have, we have the class-wise for a reason. It's basically to make our students focus on learning. And I don't feel it's the district's responsibility to allow kids to take the MacBook home and apply applications like Fortnite, Call of Duty, you know, all the things that we talked about in the meetings. These, these students, they are circumventing and they're filtering and they're basically getting to things that is not with the responsibility of the district. We are not responsible to, again, allow these students to focus on other things besides their education.
Okay. Now I'll offer my two cents and I'm going to be in favor of this motion also. It's obviously, well, first of all, I'll get back up a step and reiterate my thanks to the committee members. When they said there was a majority of the board there, that would be six, not including Joe. And that's okay. But I want to thank our admin, our, our staff at the high school, and everybody that has put all in the board and the committees, everybody that's put all the time into this. As you can tell by the discussion, this reaches across the district and touches every student, every staff member, every administrator, et cetera. So we don't take the decision lightly and I appreciate the work that all the board has done to really, to weigh this issue in, in your own view, right, of what's we're supposed to be doing. For me, it's not that difficult because I always lean back on good advice I got years ago that when there's a very challenging decision, you filter it first through what's best for the district. Because that's our job, the seven of us sitting up here. Now, that's augmented by what's best for students, what's best for staff, what's best for families, et cetera. So all of those pieces have to come into the play of this discussion. And there are advantages on both sides of this question. I think there are more advantages to pivot to Chromebooks for our high school students. The memo does an excellent job of sort of picking out the different pieces of this. I agree wholeheartedly with Jennifer's assessment of the financial consideration. We were told that we undertook this pilot and finance was not a driving factor of why we would look at this. And that's true, right? We're doing this for the educational piece for our students. However, the financial piece, like everything in life, i- is always a part of the discussion. And if it's not the driver and if it's not second or third, it's still, in my mind, a part that we would want to focus on. And there's a clear advantage to pivoting to Chromebooks from the financial standpoint, without going into the, the data, the numbers, et cetera. So that pushes me towards that. The, the focus in the classroom is important. I agree with both comments made as far as we need to teach responsibility. I agree with that. But to, to the degree that students would still resist that and, and choose to be unfocused, may be the politest way to say it. What we can do to help that, I think, is, is a part of our responsibility here. Board policy fifty-one thirty-six created a number of years ago outlines technology use. It is very specific in that the only appropriate use for devices on student property is for educational purposes. So to the degree that we're not following board policy when those aberrations happen, I'm not suggesting any repercussions. I'm just saying that we, as a board, to follow that policy, need to be focused on educational objectives. It's been shared a number of times that both of these devices will meet that. To me, that's, that's where we need to land. And I'm, I'm going to put a lot of stock in wanting to support administration and staff recommendations and guidance and not try to insert my own judgment for the decision part of this treaty. So that's a rather long-winded answer, but that's, that's where I'm going to leave off and let anyone else recomment if they need to. But I'm, I'm going to support this motion. Go ahead.
Yeah, like, can I just, someone has been.
Absolutely.
So can I ask just a procedural comment first?
Yep.
But I guess this is an ask of the administration and of Rick. Are we, should, obviously, this has been the, you know, which is, like, it should have passed. Are we confident that if we want to name a model of the Chromebook that we're going to, or do we want to leave that open? Does that tie us in the sticking to one model? I know, I know during the research, you guys, I want to hear from one. I would hate to be stuck. I'm just, that's a procedural question.
I'm happy to comment on that. You have a point that naming the model might make it appear to require only that model going forward. In future refreshes of critical self-reconstruction, we certainly would be looking at what's in the market. The CR-12 will invariably be outdated at some point, right? I think the platform is we're looking for. We would be developing a technology standard based on what we're doing now with the CR-12. We heard feedback from staff and students about HD screen, which is why we're recommending that with the recommendation over the Dell Pilot device. But beyond that, I, I hear that is a fair comment.
Well, yeah, I guess the way I see it, Ross, is that, you know, you had a different model just nine months ago. And between now and the time you're on, there may be another model that comes up. So like, if it should pass, then you can handle it. Or is there an opportunity to get like, or switch models?
I, I think to that point, if there were desire to amend the motion, I would say the platform is important.
It's a, this is what I get, you're fast.
I'm sorry.
So a limiting year of J pass.
Correct. Thank you.
And then I have another comment.
Do you have an answer to that, Rich, or do you want someone else?
No.
Okay. Let's, Ed, continue.
I was going to share something else.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we've kind of all beat this to death as far as thanking everyone. But I want to put on my path a more, I'm also saying, when we're talking about what's doing right for the district, for our students and for our staff, there's a lot of times where both sides can be right. And I think where, well, those, those times, it's super hard to understand and really go forward. So I applaud everyone for digging into this. I don't want to dig deep into this, but I, and I absolutely respect the memo, but I also think there are things that are not in there that we could have been discussing for the last few months and I would have loved to discuss. I'd love to see the feedback tonight from the, the teachers that came up and talked. I would have loved to have those discussions prior to this, to tonight. It's not an easy decision and I do trust everyone here. But I have a lot of concerns, I have a lot of concerns that I would have really loved to dug into sooner than now. And I've all, we've heard it said several times, it's clearly outlines, I think there's more, there's a lot more to be there. That's just my opinion.
But Rich, do you have something?
I just wanted to share that it was interesting when Bryn Miles shared that she needed convincing because I didn't too in this situation. As the staff at the high school looked at the Chromebook option and we saw that, how strongly they feel that a Chromebook can meet student learning needs and the ability to help students focus better are things that are really important for me as we, as we've taken a look at this. I know that the two devices can do different things and there's things that different people would value in different ways. And I understand that and respect everybody's feelings on that. I, for me, a really big point is the student focus and how distracted students are by the things that we're able to do on the MacBook and how difficult it is for our staff to monitor that and the impact that that has on student learning. We've seen not just in our district, but across the state, across the country, across the globe, because we're seeing the same conversation take place in other countries. Addressing student focus with devices, whether it's their own cell phone or devices that schools provide, is a significant issue. It's a significant issue for teachers, for administrators, it's also a significant issue for parents. Parents that have kids that are teenagers now know that there's a lot of distraction on their device that maybe weren't there to that limit and weren't as addicting as, as they are right now. So that's an important piece for me and then the financial savings. If we have the ability to meet our educational needs and we can do it at a savings, financially to the district and a significant saving for families, all of those things together are the reasons that I support the administration's recommendation.
Everyone's had a chance now, I guess there's an opportunity to recomment if someone is inclined.
I'm just that more, more of it is popular, I haven't been able to say it. Me personally, I will support whatever comes out of the board decision. And I will, whatever, whatever way this goes over the road, my stance is I'd be very supportive and helping in any way possible if desired. So I hope to support. And then you were going to ask a question, I'll let you ask the follow-up question.
No, my question was just for a roll call.
Yeah, and we certainly will.
And if you're going to do a roll call, is it improper for me to ask Mr. Goodman? But first, if you can hear, if you can hear us.
I, I will check with him, but we certainly can. Does anyone else have comments, Jermaine, for the motion on the floor?
I, I just got one other thing I want to throw out there that I had on my list. I had talked about this at the committee level. And I know the reason was we're not going to go staff Chromebooks is because that hasn't been tested or whatever. But, I mean, if we're going to talk about cost savings, I mean, that's, that's, well, based on the memo, it's seven hundred thousand dollars for those eight hundred MacBooks. So I just want to take that into consideration. I feel staff with MacBooks, students with Chromebooks, I, I'm not an educator, I don't do what you guys do, but I foresee that possibly being an issue, maybe, in some classes. Anybody want to walk me through that one?
Yeah, John, you're correct. The, the staff teaching instructional device was not our focus as we went through this pilot. We were specifically asked to look at the need for MacBooks in the hands of our nine twelve students. We can and should ask what is the best teaching device in the future. We should ask what is the best K-three device, what is the best four-six learning device, what is the best presentation device? So ideally, there should be an ongoing kind of a conversation. I will say though, I surveyed districts around us, all who use Chromebooks as their primary student learning device. And it was about fifty-fifty, fifty percent MacBook, fifty percent teach on Windows. There was one district that gives a high-end Chromebook to teaching staff. Teachers are not students, the means are different.
I do want to, I want to ask John for some clarification too, because I don't know if I misunderstood him or not. But I, I thought that I heard that you say that the teacher devices were seven hundred thousand dollars?
I'm sorry, the, for eight hundred of them, it was seven hundred and three thousand for the four-year lease. So if you took out four hundred roughly, that would be, my, my pencil math here would be, you know, three hundred and, three hundred and ten thousand dollars, I guess, over four years.
Yeah, the teacher devices make up four hundred of those eight hundred MacBooks that are in the proposal. So their, the total of those would be half of that.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any thoughts? If everyone's had their opportunity, I will call the question. It has been asked to roll, call it, and we can do that.
apologies, just in reference to next comment about if you want to name the model of the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, Rich, would you suggest an amendment to that motion? Yeah, Rick, would you suggest an amendment to that motion?
Well, I don't think we're creating a precedent here. This is not policy. This is a specific action. If in fact, a different model is a choice at a later point down the road, I would assume they would bring that back to the board to pivot.
Based on, and Ed and team that dove into this more than I, correct me if I'm wrong here, but based on what's available right now and with the devices that are available right now, and if this motion is approved, we would need to get those ordered very soon. Based on what's available right now, our recommendation would be to go with the Asus device. But if, I was asked for a potential edit, a potential edit would be just to take Asus CR12 out of the motion that the district uses Chromebook as the student high school students' one-to-one learning device starting with the 25, 26 year.
That would be an appropriate amendment if someone offered it.
Okay, I would make a motion to amend the motion to scratch the Asus CR12.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Okay, so there's an amendment offered. If you can hear us, John, the amendment would be to amend the motion by removing the words Asus CR12, or in other words, the identifier of the model, and we would just need Chromebook in as an amendment. Is everyone clear?
What about or comparable device? I mean, I think there's a little bit of trust here that if this does pass, that a unit comparable to that, price-wise, HD, you know, one that is fixed and everything that we don't like about the current test model, you think it's necessary to have a little caveat in there that states that?
I do not as chair, I don't think that's pertinent to the motion. I think we're good. If the amendment, we will redo the entire motion, of course.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to share, before the board votes on the amendment, I want to make sure that we have clarity on the other agenda that's later in new business. If the motion is approved on the move to Chromebooks, whether it includes the Asus or not, then Agenda Item 7B is action on the Apple lease. And our plan would be for this initial purchase would be to go with the Asus CR12s, which are priced out, or actually, yeah, which is priced out in that plan, because that's the preferred device right now. What the motion has amended would allow our admin team to do would be to look at other options of Chromebooks, or if John's idea on a motion or a similar device, when we look at repurchasing, do we allow us to do that? And if the original motion or if any motion for Chromebooks doesn't pass tonight, then that 7B would be moved and we would need to bring back a lease term to the next board meeting for board approval.
Okay, so folks are clear, the amendment is first, which means we are striking the words Asus CR12 from the motion the way it was originally offered. So all we're doing is removing the model designation and then we would follow and vote on the regular motion, just so folks are clear.
And how are we guaranteed that we're going? So the model now that they're, that they piloted was what they were replacing because it was difficult for the tripod, the screen was small, so that was why they moved to the other one. So now if we take that out and strike it, there's nothing in policy that states that they can't just go buy 200 or 400 of those?
No, the way this would work is we're not going to mandate they use Asus CR12, they are still able to. If that still is the model of choice, if this motion is successful, we're not eliminating their ability to use that model, we're just not making that specific designation.
I think if I can just restate, and it's a good point, so my motivation was I made the assumption that if this passes, that they're going to choose that Asus model or something better, that's my assumption. By removing the model that has given the action technically to take something less, I don't think that that would happen verbally, that's not stated. So I, my motivation was to not pencil them into a corner in case they found something better that they wanted to do last minute. If that's complicating everything, we can leave Asus or at least John's language or comparable, you know what it works.
Well, we've got to deal with the amendment that we got first.
Sorry.
So, just to be clear, does anyone else have thoughts on amending the motion? If not, I will call that question. And are we okay with a voice vote here?
Yes.
Okay.
I remember once when we voted on the amendment, whether to incorporate the amendment or not, and there was some confusion about whether we were voting to approve the amendment or not. So I want to make sure that before everyone votes, they understand that this vote is on whether to amend the original motion, it's not to vote on whether we approve amended motion or not.
Correct, I'll restate that, but that's exactly what I tried to convey. We are voting on the amendment, which is to remove the words Asus and CR12, the way that Rick offered the motion. If that is successful, we will come back and vote on the motion in its amended form. If it is unsuccessful, we will vote on the motion the way that it's offered originally. Just so everyone's clear, there's two votes. First is just the amendment. All in favor of the amendment to remove Asus CR12 from the original motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. So our motion is amended and to read off of the memo, then Rick's motion seconded by Jennifer, would be to use Chromebook as the MHS student one-to-one learning device starting with the 25, 26 school year. Now, there's also an opportunity for further discussion if folks want. And I'm not seeing any, so I will call the question. We're going to vote this roll call style. And John, are you able to hear everything I'm saying?
I sure can.
We're going to pivot toward the laptops, which represent you, and we'll have you go first on the vote for the motion the way it's on the floor.
Uh, no.
Okay, I will pivot to my left and go Jennifer.
Yes.
Is it yes? Tracy?
No.
Joe is a yes. Rick?
Yes.
Annette?
No.
Is a no? Ed?
No.
That is four no's to three yeses, the motion fails. All right. And that will push us to the next agenda item. That is an HR Resources Committee report from Rick.
Okay, the HR committee met last week on February 3rd. First item on the agenda is November 2024 Benefits Advisory Group update and review and discussion of 2024 and 25 health insurance benefits. The Benefits Advisory Group held its first meeting back on November 20th. In Board Docs, you will see a copy of the slides of the information shared at the meeting. Al Jaeger from USI, our benefit consultant, shared information regarding the past year's claims review, a review of the prescription drug benefit, and some information about the employee wellness clinic. At the committee meeting, Chris shared some spreadsheets showing comparisons between the other school districts and the Badger Conference and in Rock Colby. There's a lot of information on these spreadsheets. I would direct you to pay especially close attention to the line regarding max out-of-pocket for employees, which is highlighted, and the percentage of premium paid by the district and employee. I think that you will find that these show that our current plans compare very favorably with the other districts listed. This is being shared at this time just as an FYI. Chris, did you have anything to add to that topic?
Just one thing, that it's really hard to compare health insurance plans between districts. It's, if we can stay in the fruit family, we ideally try to and to paint that comparison and share that with our Benefits Advisory Group, which includes a lot of staff members, as well as presenting it to all of you. There are unique plans across all of our school districts that we work with.
Any questions on that topic?
No, can I just say something? I've been attending the HR committees just trying to learn and you, I know you say that they're very different, but you do, you have helped me to be able to understand them and the differences between them. So I appreciate the way you use language to simplify things.
Thank you. Chris and all of our HR staff do a great job.
They really do. They really do. Same through those meetings this first few months, they really do.
Next item on the agenda is review of 2024 teachers on-call data. In Board Docs, you will see the information regarding the fill rates for the current school year for both teachers and aides, which have been quite high this year with a little bit of a dip in January. The things that you would expect to cause changes in these numbers are things such as staff illnesses, FMLA, et cetera. On the last page of that handout, you will see increases to the subrates that the administration was recommending for next year in order to stay competitive with our neighboring districts. These changes are not an action item for tonight, but will be coming to the board later this year with the temporary dial-in and occasional employee rate updates. Anything on that, Chris? Sure, any questions on that from anyone? Okay, the next item on the agenda is anticipated 25, 26 staff compensation timeline. You will see the timeline in Board Docs. HR department hopes to have the comparable data for the teaching staffs for the Badger Conference by the end of February. You'll also see the anticipated dates for all of our other employee groups on the memo. Thanks to our HR team, as this is a very busy time of year for them, and stay tuned for more information regarding all of these groups. Any questions on that? Last item on the agenda is the 2025, 26 support staff health insurance contributions and wellness incentive update. Since 2022, the district has used a multi-year strategy to manage costs associated with medical claims. The district's strategic plan focuses on maintaining the competitive compensation and benefit package using market comparables. In February 2023, the board approved increasing the teaching staff and administrative health insurance premium to 15% and increased the support staff health insurance premium to 10% for the 2023, 24 year. In April of last year, the board increased the support staff's share from 10 to 12%. The district's increases to its health insurance rates during those years were 6.9% and 9.9%. The administration will be meeting with our insurance broker at the end of February to receive preliminary rates for the 25, 26 year. Chris also gave us an update on the wellness incentive program. Just a reminder that this allows for employees or the primary dean insured to earn $200 for a single plan or $400 for a family plan if they complete their annual wellness visit, either with their primary care physician or with the employee wellness clinic. As of December 31st, the district is at about the same pace as the number who received that incentive last year. Chris, you have anything to add at all?
No, sir.
Okay, any questions from anyone? Okay, that's it, John.
Excellent. Very good.
Thank you.
All right, that completes a rather exhaustive committee report structure. We've been very, very busy, as you can tell. New business, A, as Ms. Musgrove is making her way to the podium, is 2025, 26 educational options. Welcome, Julie.
Good evening. So by, by the state of Wisconsin, school boards are required to annually share information. So this isn't something you vote on. It's more of an update of the educational options that were shared in the Board Docs, what's available to our scholars and their families within our district. So they are just the educational options and it also shares the link for our district and school accountability reports, which is their school report card, and then it lists all of the educational options. It's more of just an update to, like, you know that this is something we have to do annually. Open enrollment is just opened up last week, so it's a great timing every year around this time. So this will be reposted as for the 25, 26 school year. So yeah, and the district update tomorrow. Any questions?
Thank you. And then a related topic, as Mr. Bill Horn is making his way to the podium, he is letter C here, and this is, actually, I better let everyone know, I skipped item Agenda B on new business, as Rich indicated, that is a moot point at the moment. So we will revisit that at a next, or future board meeting. And then C is summer 24, 25 ECCP, Early College Credit Program, if I'm right.
That is correct. So as you know, we bring each college semester, we bring for both students that are requesting courses through Early College Credit Program, or start college now. But we also bring, sometimes we have students take classes in the summer that are for students wishing to take the classes, as indicated in Board Docs, those four classes this summer for ECCP. And again, this is not an actual item, but just we bring it for each university.
Very good. Questions from anyone?
Jeremy, is that average or is that down credits or?
Again, this is just the summer. Sometimes we have zero, sometimes we have two, three, five, six. This is pretty average.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bill Horn. That completes new business and miscellaneous, A is our staffing report.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing report presented.
Second.
Rick's motion is seconded by Tracy to approve staffing report. Questions from anyone? So all in favor of that, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. B is gifts and donations.
I'll move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
Second.
Tracy's motion is seconded by Annette, we'll give her that one, to approve our gifts and donations with gratitude. Questions? And all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. And meeting dates, Mr. Donovan?
Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on February 24th, two weeks from tonight, at 6:30, usual time, usual place. We have a finance committee meeting coming up on February 17th at 3:00 p.m. That's Finance Committee, February 17th at 3:00 p.m. And the 2025 Day of the Capitol, four board members from across the state is on March 12th. So board members are interested in taking part in that. Make sure that you register for that through WSDA. And Chelsea and I know too, if you're planning to attend, so that we know what to look for there. I'm planning to attend that day on behalf of the district along with any board members who are interested.
Good plan.
Chris, do we need to speak to, I think we talked about that last week, but we forgot to do it?
Yes, that is something that we should be looking at calendars. Really, I'd like to have a HR committee for two between now and spring break. So just want that on your radar. I can work with Chelsea about sharing out an email here the next couple days.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Thanks for reminding me.
Chelsea, I mean, I could just, um, for vacation on the 19th, so it'll be next June 21, so that and back.
Of this month?
Yes, so next week.
Okay.
So the week after, back on the 24th, the day after that.
Is everybody from the HR committee going to be around the week after the 24th? Is there a person possibly that is there? Let's stay up late, please.
I can get back to tomorrow.
Okay.
We can't make the 26th, then.
Chelsea, can you hand out to the committee and find out what dates you're going to have for the following week?
Thank you.
All right. Any other dates we need to worry about?
That's it.
All right. So that exhausts my regular agenda. We have an executive session scheduled tonight and potentially could reconvene and open, depending on the deadline therein. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Sub 1 and Sub C, and Statute 19.82, Sub 1, which is considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And our discussion point is the superintendent contract. Go move.
Second.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Tracy. Those in favor, please indicate with a yes, and then it would be Ed?
Yes.
Annette? Rick? Joe is yes, Tracy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
And then reminding John, you have to do a different link to join us.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we are in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.